I I've taught US history, uh government, government economics. Taught that my whole career, so this is my seventeenth year teaching government and economics. And a couple of years ago, I had the opportunity to actually uh design a class, write a class, and I wrote a civics class. I think civics is so important and getting civically engaged. So you're an active uh participant in the the democratic process is so important. So my buddy is gonna is throwing her hat into the ring, which I just think is so cool, especially in my world of education. She's going for school board. Hello, ma'am.
Hey, how's it going?
Good, it's good to see you.
It's good to see you too, man.
So um, okay, so yeah, can you just like for I'm sure a lot, we have a lot of people who are following both accounts, but basically just give us like a little background into like who you are and why you're running for uh school board.
Okay, my name's Michelle Skerry. Um, I live in Fresno, California, in the Central Valley. And I'm running for the uh fourth district. It's called the McLean District. It's the main high school, so they go by kind of the main high school in the district. And I started getting involved, you know, I saw an article in twenty nineteen by a local reporter talking about Fresno Unified being in the bottom five percent in performance in urban schools in the nation. It's at the bottom of the barrel. And I just reflect on, I know the dynamics of of Fresno. I know how poverty stricken our our county is, and I I was one of those kids. And I had the opportunity to use education to kind of break the cycle of poverty. And I don't feel like students nowadays are given that same opportunity due to the rapid decline of education and the desire to obfuscate that. So something that Fresno Unified does is they keep saying, look, our graduation rate is eighty-six percent. It's amazing. And but when you look at the statistics on proficiency in reading, writing, and math, it's eleven percent, thirteen percent, twelve percent. So we're handing diplomas and pushing kids through a system to make the adults feel better about the job, the stellar job they're doing. But then kids are handed a diploma that's essentially useless. It doesn't mean anything. And that was very jolting. And then COVID happened. So these statistics are from twenty nineteen before COVID. Now, whether or not you believe the New York Times, let's just assume we do. Uh, they just published an article that we lost two decades worth of progress in reading, writing, and mathematics. Um Gavin Newsom, an article just came out about him that no student, uh students did not learn any math in the last two years. And so the the problem is compounding since twenty nineteen is essentially my point. And the incumbents, they have exploratory committees, meaning school board has turned into a stepping stone for a political career.
Yeah, it's it's usually where people start. Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know that. My boss actually queued me in on that. And I was like, wait, they're using kids as kind of like this pawn, like their future as this pawn to learn kind of like the the institution of voting and stuff like that. So and then they get their name recognition out there. You're four years on the seat, so you have four years. Uh, you get a full-time assistant for community engagement. And so you essentially have four years of free marketing to your future constituency. Um, many of the school board members are looking for state assembly. They're looking for congressional seats. They're looking for city council seats. The woman I'm looking to supplant uh dur- uh for this race, she actually originally ran for city council in the June, in June of twenty eighteen. And then ran in November for school board when she lost in twenty eighteen. And her whole platform when she ran for city council was, we need more women on the school board. That was it. Or on the city council, sorry. That was it. We need more women on the city council. And I I I remember engaging with her online and being like, please don't tell me this is your platform. And it is. And she is essentially not done much for Fresno Unified, for the McLean District, which is very poverty stricken. It's in the sou- southern part of Fresno, and so it really needs a lot of love and a dedication. And some of these schools have never even seen her on their campus in four years. And it's just disheartening. It's disheartening to hear. So that's kind of what got me engaged. Um, I I was part of a group that tried to get the school board's bonds during the earl- earlier this year. Um, every political official is bonded. Uh, you, it's an insurance and policy to ensure that you uphold your oath of office to the constitution and and the constitution of the state and, you know, the our actual constitution of the United States. And they weren't doing that, so they accepted what's called ESER funds. Um, it's like elementary and secondary school ed- education resources or something. It was COVID money.
Yeah.
Now, they spent some of this money and then there were strings attached, and I don't think they read the fine print. And so they got themselves into quite a predicament. So this is why the forced mandates, this is why the schools remain closed for about two years here. And they weren't being transparent with the constituency. They didn't even give them a voice. They didn't even give them a decision in it. They just, they literally just put up this virtual moat and said, this is how it is. It's a pandemic. And it was because of federal dollars. And I just, so I I I was part of a group that tried to unseat them, get their bonds, make them unbondable, so then they wouldn't be able to hold a political office again, because obviously they're corrupt to some degree.
Yeah.
It unfortunately, or actually fortunately, depending on how you look at it, within a week of us going to the school board meeting and giving them an office box of uh constituencies' signatures, um, the the mandates disappeared. Gavin Newsom disappeared because we were part of a whole California-wide group that was doing this to all of the school boards. So I'm wondering if word got out or if it's just coincidental, I don't know. But then that kind of started the fire again in me earlier this year. And then I went to go run for um, a school board seat earlier this year, but I was one street away. It was like a, unfortunately, the school board member passed away within her um, her four-year term.
Yeah.
And so then anyways, there's there's four new seats up right now. And so I'm running for one of those seats.
So, yeah, you know, I I just, I think there's so many people, Michelle, that that don't, that just see something wrong and then they just go, ah, man, that sucks. But I have my own things to do. I have my own life. I have my own hobbies. I so I'll just like, I think it's that indifference. I think that's a big problem with with really everything going on, because people, I talked to like Uber drivers and delivery people and people who could work in our house, my friends and everybody, like everyone kind of is on board with like, the government sucks, like in some way, or it's inefficient in some way, like bipartisan, whatever. Local, I'm in LA, so you know, it's like all of it. But then people would just go, but what can you do? It's like, well, there's um internal and external, um, you know, like um civic engagement. You can run for office like you are, or you can go out and protest and lobby and things like that too, to try and have an influence on it, but you, there's a lot you can do. So you made the decision to run, but you're up against kind of why people get into politics, not why people should. You are why people should get into politics to try and make things better. You know, I listened to Tulsi Gabbard on Rogan, and she was like, she seems like the kind of, even whether you disagree with her or not, like, she at least seems genuine in her motivation to to be in in politics. And it just, they just ousted her. You can't be that way, but maybe on the local level you can. You know, Andrew Yang's Forward Party, I don't think he'll ever get a presidential nomination, but you can get maybe local. So, so how how do you take on this, the 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 incumbent? Who might have, they might frank, do they have franking privileges, where they send out free mail and stuff like that?
So I don't know about that, but I do know that she's had four years of sitting on the seat. She has a full-time community liaison, which can help with these kinds of things, to my knowledge. She has connections with local media, because the media has been talking to her for four years about the school board and what's going on at Fresno Unified. So all those connections are really hard to overcome. It's really hard to overcome the brand recognition of her name, the availability bias. People just know that name, and unfortunately, a lot of people will vote for the name they recognize the most.
Yes. Okay, so so you're you're a smart cookie, Michelle, but like where I am, like, I guess my little area is in you know, understanding government and civics and stuff like that, just because I've taught it to high school for so long. So like, um, are there any like specific questions that we can go over in real time or like kind of think through the two of us about how do you, even on a local level? It's a, it's a microcosm of what's happening on the on the national level, but um
Yeah.
I I think, I, and you know, people say, are you gonna run for office? Like, nah, I got little kids, I'm busy, whatever, but I would love to help people to run for office. So that's where that's where we're at. So um, wh- what about the power of social media? Like, do you have access to the people, the parents, who are maybe upset about what's going on in the schools? And I just believe in social media. I believe in like sending DMs and and connecting with people on there. Uh, young people especially, um, like, I don't know, I don't I don't know, like, well, most people just like, don't, yeah, they just pick a name for school boards, like pick a name that they've seen that name on a billboard, okay, that's good, or a yard sign, that's fine. Um, so uh, will you, will they engage with you? Like, if you wanted to have like a, like a debate online, they won't, do they just ghost you, the the woman that you're trying to?
Oh, so they've, the incumbents this year seem to have been, they're kind of playing basement Biden. Uh, they, um, unfortunately, none of the local news, um, GV Wire and Fresno Bee in the past have done uh forums. And there wasn't any. And then I was invited to a forum, and it's like, hey, sorry for the short notice. Do you want to do a forum in three days? And I was like, uh, I really wanted to do it. Uh, but I already had previous engagements, and that was really unfortunate. Uh, when it comes to them, I don't, I've been trying, I've been tagging them and things and stuff like that, but I haven't really gotten any any bites or anything. Uh, what I've been doing is actually, I believe in the power of social media as well, and when you're running at a disadvantage, um, you know, with donor dollars, I I'm paying, I'm self-funding my entire election. So uh, I really want to have skin in the game, and I also think it would be I don't, I don't know how anyone would ask families right now to donate to their campaign for school board when the current school board
Right, they're doing terribly.
trustees should be doing their job anyways. Parents shouldn't have to be worried about finding people to do the job they should already be doing. And we're in this point of hyperinflation, like, how could I even ask for a dime? So I'd rather just fund myself, and so I'm using um, the maximum of two thousand dollars before I have to file for like some sort of committee. I didn't want to deal with the FCCP, so I was just like, I'll use two thousand dollars. So I strategize using social media, just like you do. I believe in the power of social media as well. And so how I've been trying to access the parents is going to the schools' social media that are in my district
Yeah.
and following a bunch of people and trying to engage with the parents and the teachers that already follow those accounts, because obviously they're already engaged enough to want to follow them, right?
Yeah.
Then get a part of parents groups on Facebook. The difficulty is you want to get organic reach and you get that with numbers, but unfortunately, people really have their niche favorite social media. So getting a a huge group of people to follow me on one or the other has been a little bit difficult, so that helps with the organic reach long-term. But I have had parents reach out to me. They're like, I I like, I think one of the most beautiful things is like people just saying, I I could tell that you're genuine. I could tell that you care about the kids. And my kid is struggling. My kid is oh my god, just, I could tell you heartbreaking stories, but we'd be here forever. And I do care. And education changed my life. Like, it changed my life. It was my safe space, before safe space was this colloquial term. Um, because I come from a household of poverty and abuse. And so what do you do? You escape to school, your your safe space. I was in all the clubs, I was in all the sports. I I performed because I was trying to prove something. I wanted attention. That's how I got it. And it helped in the long run, because I did break out of the cycle of poverty. I did go to college like I was supposed to, and and it did help open and broaden my horizons, and I really do want that for other kids. But also, I don't I'm kind of sick of the hyper-focus on college ready.
Yeah, yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, what about skills?
World-ready?
Right.
Yes, let's make kids world-ready, so you can do whatever the heck you want. You want to be an entrepreneur? Let's give you the skill set, the communication, the ability to do simple math, so you could do spreadsheet, so you can start your entrepreneurial business at seventeen before you even graduate. Let's do that. Um, anyways, sorry, I totally got off topic.
No, Michelle, I think people are just lulled into kind of a daze of indifference. And, you know, someone can come around and just like spark something like, like you can actually make, you could bring in all kinds of speakers to the high school. You could do a lot of things. I think that there's a lot of people that actually do care, but they just need to be kind of shaken up to like wake up, because they've just been kind of, they've just been, um, you know, lulled to sleep and just lost any kind of confidence in this system and any
Or they were
in their leaders.
I was gonna say, or they were fighters and they've just been beaten down.
Yeah.
And that's, so so my angle, what I've been trying to do, and it's been kind of difficult. So what you want to do when you're running is you want to create
Oh, sorry, there's just some questions there then for you too.
Oh, okay. So you want to create a dissatisfaction with the status quo. So I've been doing memes about the data and and I realize that data, you know, I, it doesn't pull at the heartstrings.
Right.
It really doesn't. And I'm a data person. Data motivates me. Um, so I've been trying to do different angles with memeing and stuff like that, but also I don't want to be too negative. You know, when you're trying to dredge up dissatisfaction with the status quo to to kind of build rapport with people and get them interested, I don't want to come off as a Negative Nancy. But then I'm also trying to have, like, look, I have solutions, and also you're part of that solution. Because you matter. These are your schools, and you should care. What do, what are you seeing? You know, um, so trying to get that message across to to kind of give people ownership.
Yeah.
Because this is, this government is theirs, and I think people have forgotten that. And trying to just kind of convey that to people. And, you know, the hardest thing is when you're you're at this level, it's kind of a cool thing too, is the best way to get your name out is to go door to door.
Yeah.
It really is.
It's just time consuming. So
What? Oh, it's so, and
Time consuming, so that's why, like, almost like the 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 digital door-to-door, you know, which is like DMs or something like that, you know, and and, you know, I, something that I that I do, it doesn't always work well, because people come after me, but like, um, sending like video DMs. Like, even to them like personally, like, you can send a bunch of DMs, just like when you have some time of like, if you have contacts with like, you know, parents or something, just want to say, because sincerity comes across. You know, like, you are actually in this to like, hey, what could I do? What could you do with four years for this little school, this school, you know, uh, board area of Fresno, California, like, it's small, but like, you might be able to make a difference for us, like some people, where right now they just, there's no connection between their school board and themselves and and somehow reaching out to them in a way of like introducing yourself, I'm sincere, I'm here, you can contact me. I want to be some sort of of um liaison, so like, if there's something going on at a school, then you come to me. You can come to me, you know, like, like, feel like there's someone. One of the things, so I tell kids who are running for like, um, like, school government. Kids are running for like, you know, student pres- president, and and I say like, alright, here's what, here's what you should do. Find a ninth grader that's just like alone, sitting alone at lunch or something. Go up, talk to them, see what they're they're they're, what's going on, know a little bit about them. And then say like, well, now you know me. And now, if there's something going on at the school that you want to change, you can come right to me.
You can come to me.
Yeah, like that personal connection. I think that we've lost that, because there's all these gated things and 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 ways to do that, but um, I think that that's really, really important. What do you need? So you need um donations?
No, I'm not asking anybody for donations. I'm gonna just foot the bill for this, you know? I've been asking for the bare minimum, and the bare minimum is, can you follow me? Can you like my page?
Yeah.
Can you comment? Can you like? Can you, can you share things? Can you bookmark things on Instagram? All of these things add up to engagement, which help amplify within the algorithm. And that's just the bare minimum that I've been asking people to help with, you know, and I've been going door to door and um putting up my own signs. I only got like twenty-five signs. I mean, well, there is one woman in this race that has a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars in her campaign fund.
Right. And like, what, and what is she doing? Sydney Smith, that guy's a savage. Oh, Sydney Smith just just mentioned following. Um, he he's just a savage. He's just like an Ironman athlete, but um, but uh, uh, like, yeah, I think that, like, something that, um, my wife tells me though, is as much as it feels weird to be like, hey, you know, going to the campaign, some people want to. Some people want to get in your corner. Some people really want to believe in this, and the way that they can show up for you is by sharing things and it's also to, you know, help finance a few signs here and there, or put a sign up. So I have, I have an issue with that too. Because I went part-time and I'm like, uh, like, I want to supplement some of my, some of this income, but I feel weird being like, oh, can I have some money and stuff like that? Like, you know that, like, I feel really weird about it. But some people actually want to, and I think that you have to, and you actually told me that, Michelle. So like, I'm giving you the same thing, like, bouncing off me back to you, is, you know, some people want to contribute to this and believe in something, even if they're not a part of your sp- specific district. So Shibi's in here now. Um, you know, uh, Shibi and I have had our our differences, but he deeply believes in the power of education. He believes the transformative element of education, the same way that it does for you. And the indifference of people in positions of power who are just using our schools as some sort of way to 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 benefit them at the expense of our children. And as much as like he and I might disagree on a million different things, we both are deeply passionate about education and the importance of that. And, you know, I think there's a lot of people out there that are like that, Michelle, that want to contribute, even if they're not in Fresno and they can't vote, that they can help boost your signal a little bit. I really do.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I could see that. I just, I I guess I'm trying to just, I I don't know how to reach my constituency, which are the the actual voters. And that's that, that's kind of the drawback of social media is like, I have followers, yeah, but how many of those actually can help? Yeah, so that's been difficult. Um, I've been meeting people in other districts. I'm like, I've told, you know, I've I've done a lot of speaking engagements.
What about that? Chamber of Commerce?
Yeah, yeah, so going to to Chamber of Commerce, um, there's a couple of events that I'll be going to this week and speaking to people, but you know, a lot of people that go to these events are not in my district. So that makes it a little bit difficult. And then like, I I, what you said earlier that I've definitely been thinking about is how do you, I'm gonna be the school board member for schools. The schools are teaching the students. I think the students' opinions matter. But how do you reach out to kids and not be a creep? I'm a creepy adult, right? I don't I don't want to overstep and reach out and talk to these these kids and disrespect their parents' authority or anything like that, but I would really like to hear from them and how, what their experiences in school and what they think the shortcomings are. Because something else that I dislike is the the future elected official that tells you what you need.
Yeah.
Without asking you. You, I can have ideas. I have ideas all day long. I'll have ideas. And I I would like to present them to people in my constituency and see, is this a good idea? Is this what you're seeing? But all that really matters is what do, what do you need? What is your feedback? I want to think I would really like to do is have like a digital a digital uh feedback box. You know, I'll have a website when I'm a trustee, and then um, people can submit anonymously, things that they're seeing. Parents, teachers, support staff, kids, something like that, so they have a voice and a direct line to me. Um, because I think that's really important, and that virtual moat that got erected during COVID, it's up around all of these trustees. They do not want to hear from you. And even when you go to these school board meetings, Will, you're supposed to get three minutes to speak. They move the commenting section to the very end of the meeting, so people don't stay for it, because they don't want you to stay to to hear your voice. They don't want to hear it. Then they'll reduce your time. They're like, oh, only two minutes, only two minutes. It's like, the meeting can go till like nine, and it's seven. Why are you reducing our time? Because they don't want to hear from you.
Yeah, and you are, yeah, um, another thing that I know about you, we don't know each other that well, but I know about you, is you are um somewhat oppositionally defiant. Would that be the right way to put it?
I'm a dissenter.
Yeah, yeah. So if if they say this is the way it has to be, it's like, no. Like, no, I'm not gonna do that, you know, resist.
Um, yeah, I mean, I mean, I've been that person in the school board meeting that said, excuse me, I have the agenda in hand, and it says three minutes a person. Why are you reducing our time? Uh, we're just gonna do two minutes, moving on.
Right.
They've literally done that.
Right. So so for every, you know, everyone out there, and this goes across, you know, left, right, political spectrum stuff, is like the p- like, you need someone who is going to not just blindly comply with what they're being told. You know, I love the uh, the ASH conformity test, that psychological test where they show the, it's pretty cool. So they show like, um, three lengths. I I teach to my class. It's like three lengths of a of like, um, a line, like three lines, and they're different lengths. And then there's one that is the same length as another one. So they're labeled A, B, and C, okay?
Okay.
And then there's one that's like the same length as B, right? And they bring someone in, they they tell them that it's a visual acuity test. It's called the ASCHE. And uh, and there's like nine people that are a plant, and then one person is actually the one getting studied. And what happens is, like, person after person after person says the wrong answer. And the person, and the person who's the actual like, like, study subject, just looks at the peer pressure and goes, but it's clearly B, what? Uh, C, and they go along with the crowd, even though they know that it's false. So they convince themselves. And I think that what I say about leadership is we want someone who is going to be able to pass the ASH test or the Milgram Experiment. You know, who are not just gonna, gonna do what they're told to do, or what they're allowed to do, or what the 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 consensus is, they're gonna actually do what is right. And it, I just think that that this is such a, it's a such a small thing, because it's like a school board of a small area, but the what it stands for is really, really big.
It's actually the third largest school district in California, and it's in like the top twenty-five or fifty in the nation. So it's not that small. It has seven-four thousand three hundred students in it with over ten thousand employees. It is like one of the biggest employers from San Francisco to LA. So we're a pretty large district, and our budget is two-point-two billion dollars. With a B. And we have teachers that don't have the resources they need. We have students that don't have the resources they need, but they have ample excuses on why we can't afford this, that, and the other. We have a high school that is the only school in the district that has a three-foot fence, instead of a six-foot fence. We have people meandering on campus. We have kids that have gone off campus. We have safety concerns. But because the trustee in that district is also a dissenter, and the the board overall doesn't like this person, they said, oh, we don't have the money. So it's political. So kids' safety is political.
Yeah.
And this whole board is political. It's disgusting.
Do they not want you on because they know you're a troublemaker? How many people are on the board?
There's seven people. There's seven districts.
Yeah. So do they, they know that you're, they know that you're a troublemaker, so they're just like, ugh, this girl's
They don't know me. They're they're ignoring me, because, um, so like, I've had articles written about me and stuff, and and nothing bad. I mean, they didn't misrepresent me, but I have noticed that they make me seem unremarkable, unimpressive.
Yeah.
Right? So that's a different way of going about ma- reducing me as a candidate, right? Not really giving me acknowledgement or just, yeah, that kind of thing. But no, you know what really was really frustrating is interviewing with with the unions, who are completely disheartened. They discuss a a a culture of retribution, retaliation, nepotism, and cronyism, and then they They all endorse the incumbents.
Why?
Every single one.
Why?
So from what I've found out is, it is an incestuous codependent relationship. So although they want change, they don't want you to change them. So at least they know the devil they know. Yeah, you're not gonna fix the schools, and you don't care about the kids, but you're not gonna mess with us. That's what I was told. So the adult, like, I'm like, who cares about the kids?
Yeah.
Who? Because some of these parents don't even care. And I don't want to be mean, because I I mean, like, you know, Joe Rogan talks about it a lot. It's it's scale, right? Or people have mortgage, they have jobs, they have this, they have that to think about. But it's like, I almost want to be like, hey, can you just give your kid like, just a, just for fun, a reading assessment at home? And compare it to what the teachers are telling you their reading assessment is at school. You're going to be very surprised on the disparity.
What are your thoughts? You don't want to like be like a mudslinger or anything, but like, the people that, the the woman that you're trying to unseat, let's say, like, how do you go about it? And because I pick fights, pick fights on on online, but it's really just to have a marketplace of ideas. Like, you're not interested in personal attacks, but you are interested in holding them accountable for their job and asking them what they would do and compare that to what you would do and let people watch it. Like, if if they were doing their job, I I would just make the assumption that if they were doing their job really well, then you then you would not be doing this. Then you would just be like, alright, cool. Like, you looked left, looked right, you said, who's gonna fix something? Nobody. Okay, I'll go do it then. And that's how the people get involved, but but like, if they refuse to engage, what's the harm, I guess I would say? This is my question for you. It's like, what's the harm in just kind of going after her a little aggressively?
I mean, I have with memes.
Yeah.
But I haven't really like, I don't want to seem distasteful. I don't want to be disrespectful. I want to be an example for kids, which is what you should be. Um, something that, can I just read you what, something she's tweeted publicly that really disgusted me? So I have it here. Uh, so this is, this is the incumbent. New data confirms that getting vaccinated does not impact fertility. This study does show, however, that a recent COVID-nineteen infection may have short-term impacts on a man's ability to conceive. While short-term, any limitation on an anti-vaxxer's ability to re- reproduce is a win. That was a public tweet that she put on Twitter, that kids can see, and maybe their parents don't want them to take it. Maybe they read something and they have personal religious feelings or values or morals, and they saw this. This is the, this is the representative.
Yeah.
And and she's kind of stepping all over their personal medical freedom, their values, their morals, their decisions.
Don't let them breathe. Like, that's like
Yes. Yes. And it's disgusting. So it's like, but, but what she does is, she doesn't focus on education. She wants to home the ho- of the home, she wants to house the homeless on school campuses. She wants to feed all of the homeless on school campuses. She wants to provide laundromat She wants to feed all the homeless on school campuses. She wants to provide laundromats. So it's all these other social programs that she's dredging up support, but nothing related to education. And although, cool, I would love to help all those people as well. There are departments that exist to do that. You know, the, the programs already exist. And, and I don't know if you saw the paper, but Gavin Newsom's gonna infuse like 4.7 billion dollars into mental health. And he came and met with this incumbent. At my, at McLean. And if you look at the statistics for the mental health, um, which sounds beautiful. Mental health, students have been put through hell the last two years. I'm sure they could use all the resources. But Gavin Newsom helped cause that problem. And when you look at the mental health program so far and you look at the statistics on the risk, is it, sorry, the recidivization rate, right? So students that went to anger management and then it didn't do anything, they keep going back. These programs that currently haven't done anything and their answer to that is to not reevaluate and redesign, it's to put more money into it. Why?
I mean, yeah. It's the kind of, the way that it works, right? When is the election?
It is November 8th. Ballots went out, you know, mail-in ballots is, is a statewide thing. So about October 10th, people started landing in people's boxes. And then November 8th is the very last day for the election.
Okay, so this is, you know, that's, that's only a few weeks away. So what, what, what can we do? So the people who are watching this, you know, this is why, you know, there's a lot of reasons why, like, um, one of the critiques that I got before was like, you're just trying to increase your, your, you know, insta-fame or whatever. You're trying to just get clout to feed your ego.
I saw that.
Yes, I want more followers. It's, it's really not about my ego. What it is, is if I metaphorically go to a restaurant and they treat my kid terribly and spit in, in his hamburger, I want to be able to say this place is bad. And that has power. If someone I believe would do something good for a school district, I want to be able to boost their signal. Like, there's real power in having a social media presence. And that's, you know, if, if I'm aiming, I don't know if I'm a moral person, but I'm trying. I'm, I'm, I study morality a lot. Like, then it's a way to try and, and, and grow that exponentially and get it to other people. So, you know, it would be awesome if 100,000 people hear this and go, okay, cool, and shout you out. And hey, I have a cousin that lives in Friends, though, blah, 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 blah. But it's not that big. But I think that, um, other than people who are gonna see this on our feeds and stuff like that, to contact you, getting, get engaged, talk to people, whatever. What else, what else can we do from now until, you know, I mean, it's gonna be a lot of at-home ballots, like mail-in ballot, but in the next couple, couple of weeks?
Yeah, so the biggest thing that you can do is be an educated voter. Like honestly, be an educated voter. It's gonna take time. You're gonna have to do some research. So, if, there could be great candidates that don't have big, big wallets. So you're not gonna see their giant signs, you're not gonna see billboards, you know, the lady I'm running against has a couple of billboards. I'm like, jeez Louise, she has like $42,000 for this race. I don't have that. I'm gonna have $2,000. So, um, and I'm not even gonna spend all of that, but I guess what you can do is do your research. So you can go to, in locally, if you're not even Fresno, go to your county clerk's website. They have a candidate list for all of the offices. Look at who's running for what and maybe find their website. When you get these, um, these books here, where you can like read the little passage from the candidate, that's not free. So I didn't do that. That's like $600 or more, just to do like two, 300 words for people to read about you. So you need to look into them. You need to, um, you need to look up their names. You need to, I put my, you know, your email, your website to try and get people to look into you, to just kind of see what you stand for. And that way they can make their, you know, they can analyze and they make their decision after that. I mean, that's really all you can do. And then if you want, come to Michelle from McLean if you have ideas on how to reach you. So, um, I've been thinking about like going into local parking lots and shopping centers and putting like a flyer in the, in the, you know, under the little windshield wipers, stuff like that, and then going door to door. Yeah, I mean, follow, like, share, get involved locally. It's not even just about me. It's school boards across the nation um, that are falling flat on their promises. So get engaged, do your research. It's gonna take time, but be an informed voter. Don't just vote for the name you like most.
Hold people accountable. Like really.
Hold people accountable. Don't be a species with amnesia. Remember what's been occurring. You know what I mean? Remember, reflect back on the last four years and kind of like, was it, was it Reagan that said, he asked the voters, I, I guess that was really, it was really powerful. He said, how has your life improved in the last four years? Children's education improved in the last four years. If you have two kids, is your youngest kid doing better at the same age your oldest kid wasn't that great level? If not, we're doing something wrong.
Yeah. So, so give it a shot, you know, and, and like, you don't have these giant political aspirations of like, oh, I'm just gonna do this just to get my name out there and so I can someday be a congressman, so I can someday have all kinds of hookups and maybe get to shake Obama's hand. Like, that's, you know, just to, to do this for the most genuine reasons, I think gives people a lot of hope. Um, but it's, it's just, you got such an uphill battle. So, um, I'm gonna tag your, your account in this. And then, no, hopefully people will reach out, uh, with, with maybe ways that they can help. Because I think that this grassroots, this community element is what America is really all about. We've lost it. We've lost the connection between us and our representatives, you know, Benjamin Franklin said, uh, a republic, if you can keep it. And, um, and that was like, you know, you need people to represent you. And I don't think people in Fresno probably feel represented by their school board. But you're going into this for genuine reasons and that's unfortunately very rare. But, um,
Well, yeah, because I, I have no interest in holding office. It seems very stressful. You have no privacy anymore. You're a public person. It's very undesirable. So I actually, this experience has given, humbled me very much. Um, and I, I respect our political leaders that are really trying to make a difference. You know, I'm a big fan of Kevin Kiley, who was fighting a lot during the school closures and stuff. And stuff like that. It's not easy being a dissenter, especially in your own party. Like, and I'm not affiliated whatsoever. This is apolitical and I'm all about being apolitical. Um, I think you'd kind of turn your brain off when you, when you join a tribe. You kind of vote for D's or R's, you know? And I definitely don't want to be that. And I don't want people to be that. I want you to vote nonpartisan. I want you to to vote for who you think's gonna do best for your kids or depending on whatever office you're voting for. I literally have zero political aspirations. Um, if I didn't win, there's another person running in this race that's a fantastic candidate. I ran into her on a bunch of occasions. If she won, I'm all for it. I'm all for it. I don't care if I win or not. I, I just want change. I want the school district to improve and do better. I want anyone but this woman to, to have this position because she, she's not doing anything for these kids. That's just where it stands. So thank you, Will. Thank you for giving me this opportunity and talking to me about education. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, I wish I could do more, but, um, there's a lot of people out there that I think could see this and just, and maybe get a little motivated and get a little, little bit of hope. That even on, on a smaller scale thing, that, that they can be a part of some sort of positive change and get you in there to just ruffle some feathers and call people out to say like, no, let's, let's actually do our jobs. How about that?
Crazy idea.
Yeah, right. Cool. Thank you, Michelle. And thank you guys for, for tuning in and supporting.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. And thank you, Will. Appreciate it.
Alright, cool. I'm really glad to be able to, to jump on here. Uh, I'm a civics teacher by trade. Uh, I, I've taught US history, uh, government, government economics. Taught that my whole career. So this is my 17th year teaching government and economics. And a couple of years ago, I had the opportunity to actually, uh, design a class, write a class. And I wrote a civics class. I think civics is so important and getting civically engaged. So you're an active,